Here.
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 Yep.
Here.
Here.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the 2025 Bond Finance Plan and Resolution for Junius and Shoreview Projects called upon Bill Sommore. And the recommendation to the council is to approve approve a bond in resolution.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today, we're going to talk about the projects we have already let contracts on and we went through the various hearings for those. That's the Junius Avenue reconstruction, so that is the pavement, the utilities underneath, and then Shoreview. That is new pavement going on out on that gravel street. We have Michaela Hewitt here with us today from Baker Tilly. She's our municipal advisor, so she'll go through some of the details of the sale and calendar and some actions we're looking for. But I wanted to remind you a little bit, kind of overall, how we're putting the projects together. Like on Junius, you know, you have the pavement, you have the water sewer, stormwater underneath. The finance plan is to pay cash for the utility portions of those, and then we're financing the city portion and then the assessments. We went through the Minnesota statute 429 process. We're assessing the project over 15 years. Those have already been through. We've already received some payments in, and on those, we're of course not bonding for that portion. We're going to apply that cash against the project. So I'll probably let you go through calendar and whatnot and how we'll walk through that. Wanted to let you know, and I know Michaela will talk a little bit more about this, this is a smaller issue. We're looking at $805,000, and she'll kind of explain the ins and outs of that, but we're looking at placing that with a local bank. So we're going to go out and get proposals from all our local banks, plus some national banks, but wanted to put that out there right away that we're going to kind of search locally on that to see if there's appetite for that. So call on Michaela if you are set, and I'll pipe in along the way, too, if there's any questions.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Here again to follow up on Bill's summary. The the action item or the discussion item for you is to provide information in advance of next Monday's council meeting, in which being asked to consider adopting the resolution authorizing sale of the bonds. The current paramount is about 805,000, and they are general obligation permanent improvement bonds, Series 2025A. Again, the the structure for the debt service is over estimated 15 years. The debt service payments will be supported by a combination of assessments and levy. Because of the size of the issue, we are looking at we are looking at a placing those bonds with a bank, so it'd still be a competitive process. There's a list of banks that we would send out the terms, the terms of the financing, and within the terms, the draft term sheet, there's a lot of parameters regarding with the timing, timing for the bond sale, the the terms and the interest rate that they would offer, if there's going to be a prepayable prepayment option. And again, the the schedule that we're looking at, calling for the or authorizing the sale next Monday, we are looking at getting the term sheet out, I think, the end of this month. We're looking at, and that's to the, again, to the list of banks, looking at getting the response or the the bids back from the bank mid-July. Making a recommendation by Monday, July 21st. We are expecting to be back to the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, July 30th, with the recommendation for the award based on the bids that are received, and then consideration of the award of the bonds would be on Monday, August 1st. So that's a short summary on the financing. Again, the action item is to discuss the the item from next Monday, which is to authorize the sale of the bonds through this bank placement process, current amount, estimated 805,000, principal amount, over a maximum 15-year term. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jim. Would somebody care a second?
I can.
Thank you, Laurel. Any questions?
This might be directed towards Bill. You indicated you're going to use cash for utilities underground.
Yeah.
How much is that total?
Let me grant it here. So from the sewer fund, about 236,000. The water fund, about 325,000. And the stormwater fund, 18500, just rounding those figures a bit. Also, we are using some of our municipal state aid for construction, 215,000. That is state aid we receive from the from the state, obviously, applying a portion of that towards this project. We have already received about $50,000 of special assessment payments that are in the bank, so we're applying that to to the project. I will point out the estimated levy, Michaela, correct me if I'm wrong, around $51,000 because per year under this 15-year scenario. Now, I know Baker Tilly is going to leave the option open. If banks don't like 15 years, you know, what would 10 years look like? So we would bring that back to you. Then the levy would go up a little bit. We'd look at moving some funds around because those last five years then of assessments we would collect, I'd probably draw some of that down from existing cash reserves of investments, and then that would kind of pay it back at the end. So we'll look at all that and bring that back to you, but we're trying to leave good options on the table so we can get some good rates. So is that a good summary of that, do you think?
Yeah, thank you. If you were to take this total million and a half then to a bond, would the rate be better? Could we go to the market at 535?
If we financed the whole thing?
Yes.
You know that market better than me.
I think that the question is if you were to finance the full 1.5 million, generally about a million or under is sort of the threshold for competitively bid in the in the open market versus the bank placement. So I think the short answer is yes, if it were 1.5 million, I'm not the, we would competitively bid it out in the open market. I'm not sure how much of a difference in the interest rate that we would see. These are, so the other thing with the the process we're following, these are not going to be rated, so we're not going to go out and do the the get a rating on them versus if you were going financing a larger mark, going competitive bid, then we would be including a rating as well. So the trend was trying to pull up with the interest rate that we had placed, I think we were a little bit over 5% is what we had used as a placeholder for this issue, and we're hoping that's going to be conservative and the rates will be under, but we won't know until we get those bids.
Okay, so this isn't firm. The last time we placed a bid, it was, was it 430 or?
Yeah, they were definitely lower. Rates have come up a little bit now. One other comment I will make, you know, this is a smaller issue, and you may ask, Bill, why aren't you just holding it, combining it with a project next year and do a larger bond issue, which is we what we often do, and that's usually not a problem, but these are PIR, Permanent Improvement Revolving Fund Bonds, under Minnesota statute 429, and with that, you have to assess at least 20% to benefited properties. We, when we've looked at our capital planning over the last couple of years, it's going to get a little tougher to finance bonds under that statute, just with some of the big projects we have coming to reach that 20% threshold. So I'm thinking we're going to look at a different statute in the future. It would be Minnesota Capital Street Reconstruction Bonds, thank you, where we would put together a five-year street plan, go to a public hearing with it, so we can share all that with the public, and then and then finance those projects through that. It's the same result, but we're kind of, let's get these done, these qualify under, you know, as we planned under the Minnesota statute 429. If if I thought we would have more PIRs next year, I would just hold them and combine them with next year's project, but it makes the most sense, I think, to get them done now under this statute, and then we'll roll forward with, you know, as we work on a new capital improvement plan with more engineering as well, we'll bring all that back before you and kind of lay out what's this going to look like and how are we going to finance these as we roll forward, so.
So if if this were to be combined, you put the million and a half in it, you get it rated, just because of the size of this thing, it doesn't make any financial sense. Am I reading you correctly? You know, by the time you get the costs involved, just go to the local banks and get it done with at the smaller amount.
The other piece you have to look at is what are we collecting on interest? If we're paying, if we're paying, I mean, in this scenario, we've got 5.5, 5.35. We're not collecting 5.35 on the investment of the cash.
Right.
So you would be hurting us in two ways if you did it that way.
Yeah.
Any any other questions?
Thank you both.
If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. Is everyone good that it goes on the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a Planning Commission update on standalone garages. Claire Beck.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. I am your staff liaison for the Planning Commission, and they took up a topic that was requested by the council for them to look at, standalone garages in residential zones. Currently, the only way we allow a standalone garage on a lot in a residential zone is if it's already adjacent to that owner's other lot, or if that development of the garage includes some sort of primary or housing structure, either in the structure itself or on the site. So essentially, garages are accessory structures. They must have a primary structure adjacent to them. So Planning Commission, over the span of three different meetings, set a subcommittee and had full group discussions about the topic and looked at some regulations from other communities, you know, similar in size or in the in the area of Fergus Falls, Alexandria, Otter Tail City actually has some stuff on the books, Moorhead, et cetera, and came to the conclusion, based on their discussions with members of the community, some outreach that occurred during meetings, et cetera, that they were not going to change the current city code as it stands. So allowing structures on standalone lots, garages, is not something that our code is going to be changed to allow. They will continue to require a primary structure either on the same lot or adjacent to them. So that is the update from Planning Commission for this group, just based on the request to look at it.
Any questions?
Mike? I appreciate it, Your Honor. Thanks, Mrs. Beck. I know that this was, the Planning Commission took a lot of effort, worked on this for a long time. Was there was there many constituents that came in front of the commission that were against doing this process of having a standalone garage? I mean, was it a big outpouring of people, or was there more support to have some garages allowed, in your opinion?
At the actual meeting where, so at at a council meeting, Mayor Hicks said that this discussion was going to be taking place at the next Planning Commission meeting, which was their last meeting. At the actual meeting itself, there was one constituent who spoke against it, and then there were two constituents who spoke for it. So not a huge outpouring of people coming to the actual meeting. What the Planning Commission members based a lot of their discussion on was their own personal outreach that they had done. They took this very seriously, and they they did reach out to people and talk to them. We received a letter from Habitat for Humanity, so they, yeah, they did take constituents into account as they made their decision.
Do we do we know when the the code or the ordinance went into effect? Is this something that's 1960, 2010? Do we know exactly? And if we if we don't, do we know how many standalone garages are just sitting there now that would have been, I would use the word grandfathered in before this code was there, whether they're good, bad, or whatever? Do we have any idea?
I don't have a good idea of how many exist. I know that there are a couple that pop up here and there, just in discussions, either as the owner is looking to sell the property, or in a couple different cases, when there's a nuisance, nuisance violation noted, but I don't know the number off the top of my head. The code language that would have made garages an accessory structure was put into place likely in the 60s. The accessory structure language that we use now that isn't the language that's saying a garage is an accessory structure, it's just taking that into account, that was updated relatively recently.
Three, four years?
Three or four years ago, maybe, yeah.
But that didn't really deal with that.
Yeah, that didn't change the definition of a garage.
And this this may be on what you deal with, it may be something more that Lynn or Andrew can attest to. Do we have much for complaints from constituents about standalone garages in the community that they've said, hey, we need somebody to build here, you can't keep that garage here? Do we have any of those that we know of?
I'm aware of at least one location where we've gotten complaints, or at least we've gotten outreach from somebody trying to sell it. But yeah, maybe Guy can talk to a little bit.
I don't know of any complaints.
Okay. And what did they, what was their complaint? They wanted to sell it or something?
They wanted to sell it, and they weren't sure how they could go about doing that because it wasn't, it wasn't allowable in city code.
Oh, I see, okay.
Laurel?
And speaking to that, I had a conversation with Rolf last week on a property that was sold last week, and I mean, it basically is a situation where it would be detrimental to title if the city stopped it once it's there, too, was his take on it. And so you kind of have to be able to sell it at this point. I understand what it feels like to have the council do something different than what the Planning Commission recommends. Been there, done that a couple times. So I understand the work and the frustration when we're talking about maybe doing something different than the recommendation. That being said, I've heard from multiple people on this issue since the meeting that feel strongly the council should look at this again, and I can see some logic in that. I know, like, for example, the house that just went up on Cherry that was an infill lot, if you look at the front of this, this constituent said to me, that house almost looks like all garage, because these small lots don't have a lot of room, and so their their front footage is very much taken up by a garage. And I think that's an interesting point and perspective that I hadn't thought of before. To me, if we're going to allow it requiring a bathroom, and so there's not anything happening outside that the neighbors would be detrimental to the neighborhood, I think is important. But I do think that there is some value in having further conversation around this, and I'm not trying to offend anyone on the Planning Commission, but we do, I do think that there are some people that were on the Planning Commission that would like to see a different outcome, too. It wasn't unanimous, and I know one party was missing. The other thing I guess I would ask is, is there any way to get the audio for this meeting online? Because multiple citizens have reached out and said, the meeting's not online, we want to know the outcome of this. And I went to watch it, too, and I know we had tech stuff, but multiple people have said they can't get to the meeting.
Yeah, we definitely have audio of it. I don't know about the video, I guess. We always have audio.
Right, I know we do. So I would just if that can get online, so people, I don't know, I just had multiple people call and say the meeting's not online yesterday.
We can certainly get that out there.
I think the other thing is, how many lots are we actually talking about in terms of vacant lots, you know, with this impact? And and I I know that the Planning Commission talked about, obviously, CUP process, and I I don't think that we're going to get that many people want to build, and I had a conversation with a constituent, too, that they have a lot that is unbuildable for a house because of all the setbacks, but they could build a shed on it, which is what their desire would be. And so I think we have to be a little bit more flexible than just saying no, you know, coming back to Bruce Thumbs' kind of badge of yes. But, you know, so I think, you know, if we could look at how we could, you know, take the lots that are unbuildable from a residence point of view and and include those and and maybe to do it on a case-by-case basis, you know, on, you know, there's a lot on Hampton, for example, that we tried to sell for a house, and Habitat for Humanity said they would not build on that lot. So that lot's just going to sit there vacant.
Well, you did have a developer who initially asked about the lot, so it may not sit vacant.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, a lot like that, would we be better off from a tax base having a a shed? And then I think, you know, we can have some design standards, so it can't be a pole barn, you know, it has to have a concrete floor, you know, it has to be built to some some standard that it's not just a tin shack on on, and I like, I like Alderman's, your, the bathroom, I think that would be a potential kind of concern for neighbors, you know, if there was no bathroom, you know, so I don't know. Laura?
One thing regarding a restroom, I think maybe what we need to look at is the size that they're looking for before we're going to require that. And, you know, we do have a constituent that had reached out from Woodland Heights, and that's not feasible for them to have to put a restroom in there. So I think it should be on a case-to-case basis as we're looking at it, and if we're looking at a larger square footage, I can understand that we're going to want to have some sort of facilities in there, but I think to require that for everybody, I'm just, I'm not in agreement with that, but I do think that we need to look at this with a CUP on a case-to-case basis.
I agree with Laura on that, that's a good point. And I I guess my thing is, is I don't want to look at a CUP where every neighbor has to sign off on it, because I think we, everyone has a neighbor that's maybe going to be a sticking point, and so I think we need to get beyond, and maybe it's an easier CUP process if all neighbors sign off on it, but if they don't, then there's more requirements to go through the CUP.
Scott, do you have something?
I think your suggestion to look at it case-by-case is the best direction. This isn't something that we are faced with every day. It's a real rare occurrence, I think, and most, I think it's fair to say it's not that common. And so to change the broad ordinance to fit some smaller issues, I think that would be the direction, or that'd be why we ended up with the recommendation we did from the Planning Commission. But how to write something that allows for options like this, I can see the sticking there, you know? And so whether there's a way to allow for a CUP or some other options for a variance in some way, I guess we'd need to hear some more recommendations as to just how, you know, how, what can we agree to that will allow that? I don't have something to offer here at this point, because I can't write that, but I think that it would be helpful to have that option available to us.
So would you like to send this back to Planning Commission for language development?
Is that something that we can we can work on here as a council?
Is that something Rolf could do?
I think we just send it to Rolf. I think sending it back to the commission isn't going to, it's just going to delay time.
I I want to make a comment, too. I think I would like to see this go through. We live in all the lakes. People have boats, they have jet skis, they have all kinds of things. I think it looks better if they're under a roof than in the backyard or in a side yard, or, and people are getting more things nowadays. And if that's what they protect their investment, I see that if it's a if it's a empty lot, they want to put a garage on it, and then eventually maybe build a house on it, I see it more marketable in the future for others or them, and it has to do with property tax, too. So I think we've got a, we have a avenue for some more tax money to come in. So I would strongly recommend this. Thank you.
Your Honor, I think there are people that reach out to me that are here in the public that would like to speak. Can we allow that?
Sure. Is anybody in the audience supposed to speak? If you still care to come to the podium, state your name and city you live in.
Jason Burns, live in Fergus Falls at 606 North Woodland Drive. Mayor and council members, this is a a topic that I've been following for a little while now. I was in attendance at the May 27th Planning Commission meeting. I I am strongly in support of some sort of a conditional use permit or something to allow for people with situations that make sense to build structures like this, to do that. My situation, personally, I have two lots that are not adjacent to my house that are in the same development. I would be interested in putting a garage over there to kind of situations like Commissioner Krameyer is talking about, to store our golf cart, our lawnmower, that right now I just have sitting out in the open on our lot, and have some space to maybe if I want to get another vehicle, have a spot to put that, considering putting putting a little bit of office space in there to free up a bedroom in the house. And I reached out to the city to see what kind of options I had, and under the current ordinances, it's, the feedback I got was, I can do nothing, or I can build a house. That's the only path forward for me. So it's very encouraging to me to hear the the discussion that we want to look at some of these case-by-case situations that people have. I also know of coworkers of mine that have taken interest in vacant lots across the road from them, and were told that they would not be able to do anything with those lots because the road between them and the lot across the street made it count as non-adjacent. So those are additional situations where I think something like this would make sense. But, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any any other comments? Yes, sir.
Good morning, John Burns, Fergus Falls. I I appreciate what the board has been talking about now and the reaction you have to this, because I think it's something that's been ignored for a long time. We do have a number of vacant lots with garages on them. It didn't take long to to just drive around town and find three or four of them. So there's a precedent's been set, and I and I don't believe that those those structures, I'd have to be shown that, because I can look at those structures and believe they were built after the 50s, and they, so they, there's a reason they were allowed a variance of some sort, and that's all that's really being requested, is not a blanket across-the-board situation, but the variance being offered, so you can at least get a, you know, it's not a black and white no. You know, Jason explained his lot, he's got two and a half acres with the border of the county next to him, so he his, he borders the city. I have a lot out by Hoot Lake, same thing, it's substandard, we told, you talked about that a little bit ago, substandard lot borders the county outside of it, so if I'm one lot away, I can build a garage, but because I'm in the city, I can't. The other thing, when you look at things like Woodland Heights, those lots are sitting out there, vacant lots out there, and the city has provided no services. There's no sewer, there's no well. Give them something so they can take some value off those lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Would somebody?
I'll offer sending the.
Just one moment.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I and my husband are very in support of Jason and Kelly building a garage. They're right next to our yard, and they are a very nice, responsible young couple, and they take care of the place, and giving them something to store their toys in and their lawnmower out there, it's a big lot. But as neighbors, we have no complaints if they build a garage, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll offer a motion to send this to Rolf for wording to be able to allow standalone garages. Are we not there yet?
Second that.
We can do that, and then you you can come up and speak, we'll just.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jason Kurnier. I do not live in the city, I live just outside in Ardell Township. My father moved from south of Perm into the city over in Valley just two years ago, and of course, when you're coming from the country into town, you have a lot of stuff. Right now, that stuff's at my house, unfortunately. But similar situation with Jason was talking about, the lot across from him was for sale. We looked up buying that lot, or before we looked up buying the lot, we called the city and and they said, you can't do it. And I'm like, it's just across the street, and they said, and they said it has to be adjacent, and I'm like, well, isn't that adjacent? And they're like, no, it's across the street. And so we were able to, we decided not to purchase the lot and make the investment in that lot, and it said now we're building about $100,000 shop at my house for his stuff. So so, you know, basically, that investment didn't come to the city. As as Councilman Krameyer was saying, you know, no longer are you getting that that tax revenue from $100,000 shop, that's, it's going to be a nice shop, you know, it's not going to look, you know, some substandard or something like that. But the other thing I thought about with this is, you know, if the lot's large enough where you could maybe put that garage on the side to allow, you know, a resident residential home in the future, I think that would be a good idea as you think about the language around this, because in our situation, we would have loved to have said, yeah, we'll put the shop over on the side or the corner of the lot, and then we, you know, in the future, if somebody wants to build there, you know, that would be doable. So that's something to think about, too, as far as placement of that structure. And then the bath. bathroom, that would have been a challenge for us, because it would have been probably a smaller garage or shop. And in putting a bathroom in when, you know, you just live across the street, it went to made a lot of sense. It would just add a lot of expense to that shop. So just some comments from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to comment. I think, too, and that's a great point that you made, is I want to look at this as, you know, hey, we're open to different ideas here now. I want to look at this as, hey, maybe this is our first step for some economic improvement here. And I really feel that, you know, this all works together. We have to get our attitude right here and say, hey, yeah, let's try this. Let's do this. If something doesn't work, let's reevaluate it. But if this has been this way since the 60s, I remember as a kid, I could see that and it's still there, a house that's not a house, it's a basement house over by the Dairy Queen. I figure what street that's on, if it's a junior's or what it is. But that's been there forever, it seems like, because I'm old now. So I want to just see things move ahead a little bit. Thanks, you guys, for your comments.
We have a motion. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign.
Quick question. One thing that we had previously discussed when this was in front of us is getting some definitions down as far as what is a barn de minium? What is a, you know, tiny home? And that's something that I don't know if planning commission looked at. But that was a discussion that we did have when we originally, you know, talked about this is some of those definitions need to, you know, be defined in here.
And maybe maybe that's some of the can go back into planning commission, because they know there is an interest in tiny homes.
Right, right.
And maybe that's a separate deal than the sheds.
I would agree. We get that back to planning commission. With the goal of allowing with the goal of allowing tiny homes, is that what you're kind of talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Mr. Layton, he's the one who had, you know, originally brought this up, and the definitions were in there. So if you want to speak a little bit to that.
Yeah, I think the original email was to the planning commission, number one, to define these different structures so we have a clear understanding as to what a garage is, what a meeting home is, what a barnidium is, what a shop is. But I don't want to overkill this thing. Some of the recommendations that I read at the planning commission were, you know, structural limitations or design, I think that can be handled under case by case position, case by case case. Remember, the other second part of that was I remember before I was on the council, someone approached the city. They wanted to build a home for a child. And they wanted to put it in an LLC or some other entity. And I think that's another thing that we should discuss.
That one is a tack. That one's a I'll tell county issue, not a city issue.
Interesting.
So we'd we'd need to take that up with the county.
Who do we talk to at the county? I'm just sorry.
It would have been Wayne Stein, but I don't know. I don't I don't know who it is now.
So the county dictates that this house can't be in a entity?
Houses are allowed to be in LLCs.
LLCs, yeah. Houses can be in LLCs.
Yeah.
I'll push it up the tree. Thank you.
And there's lots of them.
And I appreciate the council's support.
Any anything else on that? If not, let's move forward to economic development and TIF policy creation. And I we can do that with a combination of Clara and myself.
Your Honor, I understand that this might be a little bit longer. I don't know where the library is, but could we push her in front and have her present her case? And then we could go into TIF?
I'm in no hurry. I'm I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The objective of TIF is not not necessarily going to be elongated. Because the the goal of this was to present some options. Obviously, the maybe I'm still the author, so.
No, no, I there's no thunder involved. Yeah, so the mayor had asked that this body begin looking at the development of a TIF policy, planning for the hiring of an economic development director. The intent of that policy discussion, even if you don't end up settling on a policy, is simply to allow applicants, when they are looking at the city of Fergus Falls and and deciding whether or not they want to apply, if this is going to be the right fit, to give them some direction as to what the council is looking to do with something like a TIF policy. What sorts of projects are you going to prioritize and value? And how can that be worded into a policy that can then be potentially used in onboarding with a new staff member and then continue to be changed and work with down the road as we get more comfortable with an economic development director? So I supplied you with some options from different communities that have that I've either sought out myself or been sent from Baker Tilly, because they had they had a list of communities that they've worked with where they felt that like the TIF policy was really strong. So you've got some options in front of you of what a TIF policy could look like. And I think the mayor is just looking for some discussion and potentially the creation or start of a draft.
And I think that was as much as anything there are, I think it was how do we get consensus on what we're going to do, what we're not going to do. And so, you know, we've obviously had people come to ask for TIF, and it would be easier for everybody concerned if if there was some guidelines and whether policy or guidelines is the terminology. But this was, you know, a selection of. And when you look at, obviously, the different cities, you know, everybody's different, which is probably understandable. But there's certain headings that are the same. But then, you know, some of the things that, you know, were kind of interesting is, you know, what people require as kind of match. I mean, there's one city that says there has to be 20% equity in a project. There's there's another one that says there's a maximum of 15 years, you know, there's another one statement that aligns investment and tax increment dollars to, you know, how many kind of employees are hired. And I think this was just something to kind of hopefully get the juices flowing from people. I don't expect we're going to come out with a TIF policy today. But it was more to ask the council just to read these, you know, do some, you know, own research. And then we could have a work session coming back, you know, with a where we can nail down a framework of what we would like to see in such a policy so that it becomes a roadmap for somebody that wants to come to the city. Scott?
I found it really helpful to read through these other options that were from these various cities that helped understand the fact that there's more than one kind of TIF. There's TIF that you can get for jobs. There's TIF that you can get to fix blight. There's TIF that you can get for, you know, building housing. There's different goals. Found that to be very helpful, how it was many different approaches to those various options. I thought it was also very helpful, as you mentioned, the various towns with their different ways to approach it, you know, what kind of deposit they would require to do the administrative work and what kind of security they would have for the investment and the terms, you know, whether they'd be nine years, 15 years, 20 years, whatever it would be. For the most part, the real long terms weren't included in these.
Right.
You know, there was only one example that went out over 20 years.
Yep.
And my sense is that this group would like that idea and not like to go quite so long on some things. So there's, I think, some real good things that we could pull from this. But as you mentioned, for us to try and put this together, we're going to have to have somebody draft something and lay it before us and say, what do you think of this? And then edit it probably than to try and pull four of these things together into any sort of a agreement today. So what are you looking to do next?
Mike?
Your Honor, I appreciate it. And I agree with Mr. Kwame. But I think the first thing to do is to, you know, to say thank you to you. This this is out of one thing that we could do in this city. This is so overdue, in my opinion, that needs to be done. This will affect our city economically and for a long time to come. This is going to set a basis where this council can sit down, make decisions together as a group, see it in writing, and the people that come before us will know exactly what we're looking for. And this this policy can enhance economic development like like nothing else. And so this is very important. One of the things that I would suggest, and I'm not as savvy with it as you, but when we went through and did our economic development plans, the three groups, I think Mrs. Beck put together something that was like a culmination of those those ideas. I think it would be effective to take some of these other cities and see if we could do a culmination of ideas. And you'll see what rises to the top. You'll see, you know, what what is there, if that's possible. And I think that will give us a good basis of where we're going to go. But when I seen this come up on the committee of the whole, this this I can't thank you enough.
I think I think that was one of my thoughts, but I wanted to kind of, you know, run that by the council, you know, the last time, you know, we could use AI to help take, you know, X number of policies and bring them together and say, what are the common factors? And then and then use that as a as a template, not not as a policy, but as a template. And then that would give us that draft document that Scott is talking about. Then we could go through that somewhat line by line to say, you know, we we agree with this, or we disagree with this, or we'd like to tweak this this way or tweak that that way.
And there might be other things that we want to add to it.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Laura?
So when I got the packet, the whole thing wouldn't load for me. So all I received was it stopped after Alexandria. So I didn't get to see the rest of the TIF policies until last night. So I kind of went out and I was looking at a few just on my own. And I looked at Wyoming, Minnesota, Jordan, Minnesota, Rosemount, St. Francis. And, you know, all of them have different pieces in there, I think, that would fit for us. And I kind of I I did take those and I threw them into ChatGPT and, you know, kind of it's going to, you know, it showed me difference in qualification requirements, financing structure, but pretty similar to what, you know, you've sent us now. But yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, if we're going to be talking about the, you know, financing structure, that's probably going to be different on the type of TIF district that we're looking at. That's something we're going to have to keep in mind as we move forward with it, is each each district is going to be a little bit different. And then same with the TIF duration limits, you know, different maximum standards for the different districts that we do have or that we would be providing. So.
And I think the other thing was there was some maximums within some of these policies. So I think it does indicate that we don't have to give everything, you know, away, that other communities are asking asking for something in return as well, you know, that is a partnership as opposed to just a one way a one way street. Laura?
Couple of things. I did a little bit of a deep dive into other towns, too. And I think that owner equity piece that we haven't really been requiring, I saw multiple that had 20% or 15%. I think that's a piece we need to look at very seriously. Another thing is, is living wage, like, we're talking about how many jobs it's creating. I think we need to look at, as we look at this, what a living wage job creation looks like versus a minimum wage job and things like that for what we're giving for TIF, because we really need to encourage living wage employment in town. And if we're giving away something, we need to see that return to sustainable family on our tax base, hopefully. And I do agree that duration limits need to be looked at. That being said, we need to leave ourselves enough flexibility to allow a project to happen, too. And so I think we need to kind of weigh all options. But I do think that owner equity piece is important, that there's true investment on both sides and not just looking for a return on the part of the investor.
There was Rosemount. They didn't require, they strongly encourage. That was it was strongly encouraged, a one to one match in public and private funds. Yeah. And and for houses or for jobs, absolutely. I mean, what's going to quantify as a head of household wage here?
I think, Your Honor, the way to look at this, and I agree with the council members, that, you know, the council has the ultimate decision on what they do. But this policy or this this handout will give that economic development director the the clear guidelines to bring to the council and say, hey, this this group does not meet the criteria because of this, or this group meets the criteria because of this. And they'll be so well versed in this that when they come, they're going to give us an opinion that will really guide us to do it, where we don't have to sit here and kind of guess. We'll be able to tell it and then make our decision. So very important policy for the city here. Millions of dollars will be exchanged both ways because of this type of policy in the right direction.
Alan, did you have something?
Yeah, I would just, you know, I agree with Mike. I agree with everyone here. You know, I think that was part of our that was a major problem. You know, it's it's hard to play a game when you don't know the rules. And this is going to streamline economic development greatly. So I really, really, really support this to get this on the books.
I think the next two senators will take probably include the Jordan, the Wyoming, Rosemont, and and maybe maybe start with what you've got, and then bring back a draft document and push it up.
I think, Your Honor, I think it's also important for the public to know, our staff has worked a lot with TIF in the last couple of years, and it's been controversial. But without the policy, they've done the best they can. And I think we need to recognize that the TIF that we've worked through has been on a case by case basis. And to some extent, without a policy, our staff's hands are tied, too, with what they can bring forward. And so it's important to recognize, you know, how hard the staff has worked to try and make things happen without a policy.
I just want to make mention, too, as far as Wyoming, Minnesota. I I worked in Forest Lake for almost 10 years, and that's three miles from Wyoming. And that whole area has just completely changed. You know, so there's something that's working over there.
Yeah, their policy was updated in 2019. It's probably one of the newer ones. Yeah.
We thank you for the discussion. Next item on the agenda is STANTEC proposal for RTC tower reconditioning, Clara back recommendation to the council to consider this STANTEC proposal to rebid the RTC tower reconditioning.
Yeah, that's pretty much the the whole thing. So STANTEC, I was tasked with talking to STANTEC about revisiting some numbers that they had given us from 2021 as part of the phase three, I think it was phase three of RTC selected demo and stabilization. And Bruce Paulson from STANTEC said, you know, revisiting those numbers is just not it's not going to work. We can't just go back to 2021 and update those. So he suggests rebidding the project and giving it to us as kind of like an à la carte menu. But he said the only way to get good numbers now is to rebid those items. So that's the request before you today is to engage STANTEC to to do that rebidding, or maybe discuss some other options of what could happen with that state funding. We have until January 14th, 2027, to get that out the door. It has to be used for RTC stabilization of some sort. So if we don't want to leave that money on the table and give it back to the state, we should make some sort of decision about how to work with it. But if STANTEC isn't the right direction, then I'm open to hearing other options.
I will offer that motion to get this rebid and excited about this idea.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion on that?
I'm new to the world here in the RTC. Number one, the state shouldn't have given it to us. They should have maintained it.
I think we.
Yeah.
They did not give it to us.
That's my prelude to where and that's my prelude. We're going to spend this money. But what's the goal? We talk about a plan, a policy, strategic planning. Okay, we're going to change the air in this facility. We're going to spend the last money we got. Then what?
Hopefully, the economic developer that's going to come on board is going to be able to help identify that. But we got to spend this money.
I'm just looking past this expenditure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Scott?
I appreciate the list that was put together. Apparently, this was suggested by Bruce from STANTEC of the various things that would be included in the bid. Okay. I'd like to add two things to the list, if that's possible, and whether that changes their dollar amount for doing the work or not, that's what I don't know. One is, there's an elevator in that piece of the building, and I don't see that addressed here as to whether that elevator could be turned back on, if it's usable, if it's not usable, to get an idea or to get a bid as far as what it would take to, you know, make the elevator work. I think ought to be included in this so that we can address accessibility. And then the second thing would be lighting, uh, even though I don't expect that would be a particularly expensive piece of the puzzle, especially if you're in the basement, you know, you've got to have lights. And in the spaces that are, uh, stairways and whatnot, you got to have some lights. And so I think there ought to be those two items also on this list of things to be bid.
I would amend my motion to include those.
I, I would argue against the elevator. I, the elevator, unless we're going to keep that place in pristine condition, elevators have to be inspected annually. Um, and I, and in fact, elevator has not been used for how many years?
Right.
Yeah.
I think, if I could give you a little bit of a reasoning though for it.
I, I mean, I, I appreciate there's some logic from an accessibility, but I don't know, I mean, that's just.
And it may end up being an expensive piece of the puzzle that in an à la carte menu, we say, okay, we can't afford that. But at least then we've got a number. And then some other organization comes along and says, we're excited about this and we want to do a match to X dollars and we'll help fund this. Then we've got a way to answer the question where right now, we can't even say, well, we don't know what it'll cost to fix elevator. And then we're faced with having to figure that out. So if it was included in this, whether we choose to do it or not, isn't really the point.
Phil?
So Clara, I think one thing with that, we should ask Bruce Paulson, would that qualify? Because the funds are for stabilization and preservation. So that's building envelope kind of things and the.
And maybe.
And I did send this list, sorry to interrupt you, I did send this list of items to L at deed.
You did?
Yes, because she's the one who administers that state funding, just to make sure, like, are we hitting the mark here on, on what the state is willing to fund? So that we have that information also moving forward. But I did not include an elevator.
I mean, if it's not going to add to the bidding costs, to me, getting the number for that, the other question I guess I would have is, um, when it says AC ready, does that mean that's making AC usable? Or does it mean, so can we get a number for the AC piece?
Add AC.
Right, so I guess the other piece that I get that these funds maybe can't be used for, but like Mr. Kwame said, there might be an outside group that would be willing to come in for some funding. It'd be nice to have some of those add-on numbers out of this process, even if the council's not taking them on. To me, having the information in this process would be helpful.
Mike? Your Honor, I think it's, uh, what's the cost again, Mrs. Beck, to do this thing?
To bid it out is 11,200 plus 1,000 for reimbursable expenses like printing and mileage, so 12,200.
And I, I want the public to be sure that they know that that's coming out of a fund of money that we already have. That's not something that the council is writing a check for tomorrow to do this, just to, to do that. And I think that's important for the public to know. I think the other thing, the question I have for you, Mrs. Beck, is, is there any other entity that has done more work on the RTC that's better versed in how to work on it than StanTech? Or are they the one that have done the most for us?
Done the most.
Okay, so I think that's important for the public to know too, that, hey, there's a relationship with this organization, they know the most about the building. If you're going to figure out what the costs are four years later from 2021, you've got to go forward. And this is not money coming out of the city to do it. I'm in support of getting it done.
I think if we're going to add things, then with the other piece that we should add is fencing the entire thing and putting more cameras. Because when this money is gone, the burden of the RTC falls upon the citizens of Fergus Falls. So this money, this 392,000, which, um, you know, can only be used for stabilization and, and preservation as such. So when it's gone, you know, everything falls to the citizens. So if we wanted to put AC in that building, we, we as a community will be paying for the AC. So everybody's aware, there's no, there's no operational funds available from the state.
Is the fencing, can that be considered stabilization? Or is that going to be tricky?
I would clear that, I would clear any of these new additional things with, with this, with the state.
You would hope it would, to keep it safe.
I mean, we have people accessing it now. I mean, we put, you know, plywood on all the windows and people are going up there with screwdrivers and obviously taking them off and going inside.
Maybe don't say that. Well, don't copy it.
Public meeting.
So Clara, would you have answers to these additions by Monday evening?
No.
Okay.
No, I actually haven't even heard back from the state on the initial ones that I sent.
Can, can we bid them if we're not spending the money on it? The money, we should be able to bid them. So we don't really need, I mean, if we, if we get the numbers, it doesn't mean we're spending the money that we can or can't spend on it, we're just getting the numbers.
Correct.
Okay.
So that might revise StanTech's bid.
Yeah, so if he's, if Bruce is able to get me an updated number, including elevator, AC, fencing and cameras, then yes, I could have something for you Monday. And lighting, okay? Then I could have something for you Monday. If he's not able to put those numbers together, then we would have to push that off a little bit.
And Scott, you're not looking to like light this place up like a stadium, I can't imagine, just safety.
For safety and access. Yeah, it would in effect be temporary.
Right.
All right, um, but we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against him sign. The motion is approved. If Clara is able to get that, it'll, it'll be on Monday's agenda, probably not on the, I'm sure there'll be a question of what's included or not included, if she's got anything. So we'll leave it as an item. The next item, um, is a Pebble Lake Golf Course Lease Agreement Update by Councilmember Leighton.
Yeah, I've provided everyone my handout. I'll just recap it for the public. Let's not forget that the golf course has provided the citizens and area golfers a great course, which has operated since 41. Uh, but I do have pictures of a team in 1937, um, or 35. Golf's a tremendous benefit to the citizens, providing an attraction to Fergus Falls and a huge indirect benefit to the city of Fergus Falls. Um, the golf is, golf course has been run very successfully. This year, year to date, uh, rounds of golf played in 25 is 4,496 rounds. Last year was 5,100. They opened up earlier last year. Year to date, uh, number of rounds is 6,200, last year was 7,600. Buckets hit is 2,979 buckets, last year was 29. Season passes are up this year. Uh, tournaments year to date were nine. We have bookings, uh, in the next months of eight. And there is a kid in Todd's camp starting in June 15th that runs five weeks. Their total revenues despite this is up 8%. Uh, that's a good deal. The city in the, uh, Pebble Lake Golf Course currently has a lease that runs from 25 to December 25. It's their obligation to run the golf course. The city has obligations, uh, of the equipment and the property out there. I know that they've spent some money on some other equipment personally, uh, as an institution. So I'm, I'm requesting, uh, an update of the insurance policy that the city has in regards to the golf course. And I've requested a copy of the insurance policy that the golf course has to ensure that we're not double up, uh, coverages and who owns what. Moving forward, uh, the public, uh, PLG has successfully operated this course, uh, all out of the love and promotion of golf by board members, employees, members, volunteers and non-golf citizens. This must be recognized and understood by the council, citizens and taxpayers. There's a little history on this thing, but I believe it's been a good attraction for the city. As I analyze the golf course operations and the benefit to the city, I believe it's a win-win situation so far. Uh, my recommendations today is to maintain the course with the city lease. They're requesting a, a longer-term lease in efforts to make their business plan work. They have a, a restaurant there that would like to see a little bit longer lease so that they can make their plans. So with that being said, um, I think we should consider a, a 10-year, 20-year lease with these people, uh, with an option if it ever does come up to a sale, uh, that can be discussed. There's a lot of great detail here and I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Any questions, Mark? If, I think if we're going to do a 10 or 20-year lease, um, there's some major expenses that got brought up last year when we were talking about the golf course.
And that's correct. Uh, at this point, the club, uh, the membership, uh, their investment team is going out and they're going to get, if you will, these kinds of, uh, quotes. The building interior, the building exterior, uh, equipment outside buildings. And at that point, again, on the historical lease, and as the lease runs today, um, the golf course would pay the first $5,000 and the city was obligated to pay the, the balance. Uh, that's not been done. So my recommendations here today are, let's get these quotes, let's figure out what the plan is, so both parties can come to the table and realize, okay, this is a condition of the facility. Remember, the city owns the facility and, uh, I can learn more of the truth as to what monies were spent by them, what monies were spent by the city and how this was maintained or not maintained.
Right. So do you know when they're likely to get those? Are they, they're going out?
They're going out now, so.
Okay, good. So you, once we get those.
We're moving, yep.
Any other questions, Mark? Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Leighton, uh, do you know what their marketing plan is for this year or, or in the future? Or will a 10-year lease change their ability to market this facility? Or are they looking to the city to market, uh, the course for them?
We didn't talk about marketing. Uh, the course is, is, I wouldn't say full, uh, but the rounds are, are at the high level. I've also requested a detailed budget and have them compare that detailed budget to, if you will, an industry standard. I've not seen that. But the rounds last year were considerable. So the marketing, as we heard of in the past, I think Kevin goes out, uh, they've got, uh, kind of some share things, internet posters. And every of the golf courses know who we are, but nothing direct.
Couple of things, I think you're right, Kevin does go out and try, I think they've done a good job marketing it versus the past, maybe more can be done, I'm not sure. I appreciate this document, it's helpful. Is the golf board on board with this document too? Like, is, is everyone on the same page at this point with this? Or where does the golf board stand with things versus kind of what you put together?
This has been approved by the board.
Perfect.
For my presentation. I've not spoke outside my ability.
Okay, and I wasn't accusing, I was just curious where they were at.
No, we're out, this is where they're at.
Okay, good.
Good. Jim?
I think one of the reasons rounds are down this year so far is because the weather hasn't been conducive to having a lot of rounds played out there. I mean, we had a warm week and, and it's been cold since until yesterday it warmed up again. So the rounds are going to be down from last year. The other thing I'd like to mention is they have just, uh, gone through the whole irrigation system, through each and every one of the heads and reprogrammed them and done a lot of work on the heads. And I'm wondering, uh, is that a part of the $5,000? They paid the first five and we pay the rest of, of that work that went into those irrigation heads?
I didn't know that they were doing any work on the irrigation system, so that would be all on them at this point.
Okay.
We have done quite a bit of work out there this spring already. So I was just going to ask Kevin this morning for an accounting of where we're at with that 5,000.
And, and they do all the operation and maintenance, that's always on them. It's the capital things that if they go over 5,000, one, they'll check with Guy if it's in the budget that the city has, and he could approve that. Now, if it's something not in the budget, it needs to come before you as a council, of course, so.
And they, they had a, they had an irrigation repairman there for two weeks probably this spring.
Think of the rain. Scott?
Guy, you probably would be able to answer this. The air system that was in the kitchen, that work has all been completed that was laid out or no? Are they still working on that?
There is another piece to complete yet, and that's the fan exhaust hood that's over the grills. So we've just been talking the last few days about getting that done. We've got an estimate from Ellingsons to replace that fan for the exhaust hood. We'll get that piece done and then I guess we're going to be talking with the board on how that gets paid for. Actually, it's about 10, $10,000.
Okay. I, I ask this beyond the, the next council meeting. Uh, Dusty will try to be here. Uh, my request would be if, if, uh, we discuss the golf course at the next council meeting, that that becomes on the top of our new business or the agenda so that he can get back to his baseball, uh, activities with his family. So if there's any specific questions, uh, Dusty would be able to provide them and maybe I can get Kevin in here as well.
And I mean, I don't think there's a need to bring it to the council until we've got those quotes.
Yeah.
So.
And I understand that.
Thank you very much for the, the thought though.
Yep.
Rather than consuming their time.
Yeah, that's fine.
With that, um, thank you very much, Mark. Good update. Next is department update, the Fergus Falls Public Library, and we'll call upon our librarian, Gail.
Hello, Mayor, councilpeople, good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to share information regarding the Fergus Falls Public Library. Today, I'm going to touch on a few topics, including how libraries are structured, statistics from our most recent annual report, current activities and future initiatives. But I want to acknowledge the staff members at the Fergus Falls Public Library, and you may be familiar with them. Ariel McCune, who works in youth services, um, as a youth services librarian. Kaitlin Boyer is a librarian in adult reference and text services. Krista Kugler works as a children's librarian. Emily Millard is an assistant librarian. And the photo of Emily depicts her work with the more than 125 plants that live in the library. Deb Zackman is an assistant, a library assistant and works in circulation services. And Kaia, Kaia Donay is a library assistant who is our chief cataloger. The photo of Kaia was taken during a bus trip to Itasca State Park that the library took last summer. We were able to bring more than 50 people on this trip. And I don't know if I should use the word chaperoned or guided by Kaia and Da, but they were the two staff members on the trip. And that was made possible with state legacy funds. And I assure you that the library staff are among the most competent, educated, creative and dedicated professionals. Every day, I am personally inspired by their excellent work, their commitment and their commitment to serving the public. The library is additionally supported by 11 excellent part-time library aides. Each summer, we hire six reading tutors to provide eight weeks of free reading tutoring to local children. The program is called Extra Reading at the Library, or Earl for short. The program is a partnership with the school district and it is funded through grants and donations. Earl allows us to provide reading tutoring to over 75 children during the summer. It provides community outreach to the YMCA and Kids Camp. We strive to help children become confident readers and recognize the importance of literacy skills for access, excuse me, for success in all academic areas. The library benefits from the hard work of adult volunteers who commit to weekly shifts of one or two hours a day. We have teen volunteers, teen volunteer program that is particularly vibrant in the summer, and I believe we currently have 14 teen volunteers receiving work experience at the library. We collaborate with rural Minnesota SEP and have excellent individuals work with us through that program. And we work with productive alternatives to provide work experience for their clients. Ariel, our youth services librarian, partners with the school to participate in their schoolwork learning program, excuse me, work-based learning program. And we can go to the next slide. Thank you. The Fergus Falls Public Library is a member of the Viking Library System, which is a federated regional library system. It has 11 public library members and it's located in six counties, Douglas, Grant, Ottertail, Pope, Stevens and Travers. Viking Library System was formed under a joint powers agreement between cities and counties, and this year it's going to celebrate its 50th anniversary. And there's going to be an open house on July 18th from 11 to 2:00. And I think I put a little invitation in each of your folders today. And if you, I encourage you to attend. If you've never been to Viking Library System, get a tour, it's a wonderful facility. And of course, the former Fergus Falls Public Library Director, Erin Smith, is the director at Viking, and I'm sure she'd love it if you could stop by. Thank you, Lynn. All public libraries in Minnesota are required to be members of regional library systems, and that's where we are a member of Viking. Additionally, all. Additionally, all libraries in Minnesota are part of multi-type systems. Fergus Falls is part of Northern Lights Library Network, so a multi-type means that it is serving public libraries, school libraries, academic libraries, and private libraries and corporate libraries. And actually, today, Northern Lights Library Network is hosting a workshop at Lake Services Co-op. So they're active in our community and we have a few staff members attending. And the maps that I've provided for you show the regions of both the public library regional systems as well as the multi-type systems in the state of Minnesota. Libraries in Minnesota are required to file an annual report with the state. The questions on this report remain largely consistent, gathering data in areas such as patron visits, circulation, hours of operation, and funding. However, new questions may appear every few years as circumstances change and technology evolves. So for example, in 2020, the report for the first time asked whether or not libraries were open for the public to enter and if curbside pickup was available. We actually continue to provide curbside and outdoor pickup because it serves many of our patrons well. We have 14,116 registered users. The population of our legal service area is considered 19,271. This service area includes approximately a 10-mile radius from the city's center encompassing the seven townships that surround the city. As a city library, the majority of our funding comes from the city. However, we do receive county funds based on the defined legal service area. We refer to these funds as non-resident reimbursement. And I can talk about those more if you have questions, but it's also explained in state statute 134.34. And it's referred to as Regional Library Basic System Support Requirements. There are actually four public libraries in Ottertail County, and the bookmobile serves areas that are not within public library service areas. And I would also like to mention that in the state of Minnesota, your library card can be registered at any library in the state. So it's a very cohesive, easy-to-use system. You can use libraries anywhere. Viking Library System operates the bookmobile, the integrated library system, which is our catalog and our circulation system. It provides technology support and provides significant ongoing assistance in navigating the ever-changing field of library and information science and the challenges that arise. Perfect. We're on, we're on the perfect slide. Thank you. This slide highlights some of the numbers from our annual report last year, the 2024 report. So Viking Library System also orchestrates a delivery system that transports interlibrary loan materials throughout the system. That van stops at the Fergus Falls Public Library twice a day, every day. And it's really significant because last year, our patrons borrowed more than 24,000 items that were sent to us in delivery. And Fergus Falls Public Library loaned out over 17,000 items to other libraries. And this includes within Viking Library System and throughout the state. It's a very robust, functional system that's run through the state organization Minitec. We typically have between 300 and 500 visitors a day, or an average of 410 people. We're open six days a week, and a few years ago, we added three hours to our Saturday schedule to provide much-needed weekend access to library resources. In 2024, we circulated more than 200,000 items. We hosted more than 598 programs, which include activities such as our outreach to local school, which happens monthly, five-weekly storytimes, adult book groups, and maker activities. The volunteers I spoke of logged more than 2,400 hours of work. This additional help allows us to engage in more in-depth projects such as modifying spine labels and changing call numbers on more than 60,000 books to improve resource access. We're able to process and repair and clean materials more quickly, and we're also able to get materials back on shelves expeditiously. There are additional statistics reported in our annual report, and you can access library annual reports for the previous six years on the Minnesota Department of Education webpage. Library programming at the Fergus Falls Public Library is robust. At present, our summer reading program is in full swing. Last year, we had a record number of participants. This year, during the first day, more than 800 people registered. And yesterday morning, when I checked, more than 1,300 people were registered. We anticipate another record-breaking year. Our summer reading program is important in motivating people to read for leisure. Summer reading builds literacy skills and helps students avoid the summer slide, which is a loss of academic skills that were gained over the school year. Reading throughout the summer helps students enter school in the fall at grade level and ready to learn. Reading for leisure helps adults maintain and improve cognitive skills. It's also simply enjoyable. And you will notice from our monthly calendar, I believe I put a copy in your folders or you can access it online, but that we offer a variety of activities for all ages, including visiting authors, guest speakers, history interpreters, musicians, artists, we hope workshops, classes, book clubs. We provide 3D printing access. And we host field trips to literary conferences, history centers, and other locations throughout the state. And I'm really only touching the surface of what happens at the library. Many of the special events and activities provided are made possible by funding and monies from Minnesota's Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund that we access via grants through Viking Library System. Can we go to the next one? Thank you, Lynn. We also receive support from the Friends of the Library, which is an independent member-based 501(c)(3) organization that contributes funds and volunteers that allow us to provide enhanced programs, services, and expanded collections. It helps cover expenses that are outside of our annual budget. Just like, just last week, the Friends hosted, or they funded, the Science Crew. This was an organization who came and conducted two workshops for children about rocket science. The children built and launched their own rockets, and I do have a photo of that. It was very successful. The Friends also provided fun, they provide funds for people to get free rides to the library via Otter Express. This program is so successful that they ran out of money earlier this year, but they were able to seek additional donations from the public so that the program can continue. And I am really grateful for the city's support of and involvement with Otter Express as I see every day how important transportation is for people to access resources, their jobs, to engage in commerce, and to participate in community. Thank you. The Library Foundation is an organization that supports the library with a focus on capital improvements and specialized collections such as the Warren and Jeanette Lowe Arts Cultural and Travel Collection. We also write grants in an effort to continue to provide enhanced services. A grant from Arts Midwest allowed us to host a resident artist and a Big Reads event. A grant from Lake Region Arts Council allowed us to expand our permanent and circulating art collection. And grants from West Central Initiative have provided us the opportunity to provide in Welcoming Week and help to fund our Neighbors Together program, which is a partnership with Lake Region Healthcare. And that it helps ensure families are aware of community activities, services, and resources for infants and young children. Thank you. Libraries are required by the state to submit a five-year long-range plan every other year, and this is one of those years. So we will be working on that document for the next several months. We also use the plan to strategize and prioritize our work. Our future initiatives include improving resource access through changes in cataloging and collection code, implementing RDA, which stands for Resource Description and Access, and that will impact our catalog. We're working to expand education and access to our maker space and related equipment such as the Cricket, virtual reality activities, and 3D printing. We hope to add reservation software to our website, making it even more convenient for people to register for classes, events, and reserve conference and study rooms. We prioritize ongoing continued education for all of our staff members. It helps us to expand our knowledge and keep current on library trends. We're looking at making the plaza area educational and interactive. You have maybe noticed that we have educational signage in the pollinator garden, identifying plants and pollinators, creating a learning space outside of the library. We will continue to work towards digital equity through training and support for digital navigation. We recognize that for many people, we are their only access to computers, printers, and the internet. And in a time when applying for jobs, enrolling in programs, or filing your taxes require internet access and an email account, the ability to navigate these sites is imperative. Next slide. Thank you. We're also working to promote what I like to consider our 24/7 access. And I do want to be open 24 hours a day, but we will have to do that just remotely for now. But this access includes, you can access our catalog 24/7. So you may be watching television, you hear a book mentioned, you want to quick look that up and request it. You can do that. You can access MinLink to look for books throughout the entire state. You can access Lee, excuse me, E-Library Minnesota in order to access scholarly documents, newspapers, and magazines. You can download ebooks and audiobooks from our digital collections. And we're also working to push out information regarding our online resources, and I want to highlight two of them today, and I have little arrows next to them. Myheritage.com is a website for working on genealogy and conducting ancestry research. It's similar to other online ancestry programs, but with your library card, you can access it free of charge. We also provide access to Value Line, both the print format accessible at the library and the digital format, which you can access through our webpage with your library card. Value Line provides information, tools, and analysis on companies, industries, markets, and economies to educate people on investing. Excellent. Thank you. And we engage the community via an electronic newsletter, a newspaper column, flyers, outreach, and via social media. And I'm going to highlight our Bookface Friday photos, which are extremely popular with the community. And we get feedback from all over, including from some of the authors whose books we feature. And this is the creative work of my coworker Krista Kugler. She does a remarkable job on this. Public libraries are a value-added service in a community, like parks, paths, and public spaces, amenities that make communities a place where people want to live. They are the services and spaces that enhance the quality of life for residents of a community. Libraries are gathering places. They connect people to information, resources, and other people. And with that, I do want to thank you for this opportunity. And I want to acknowledge the support and encouragement that we receive from all of the city employees and all of the departments and administration, and we appreciate the support of the council. We could not do the work we do without your support. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions for Gail? Mike?
Maybe a question, but a comment. Gail, I've been on the council law for six months, and to have a department head give that type of presentation was amazing. It was absolutely educational, made me excited about the city, made me excited to go to the library, truthfully. I hope the people that watch us online will get a better interest in the, in the library, so I thank you for that. It was really well done. The question I have as a council member, we put a lot of money, or I didn't, but the city did, into that building, parking lot, different things like that. Is it fulfilling the needs of the library at this time? Sometimes I'll drive by, parking lot will be empty, but some days I've drove by on a Saturday and that parking lot is completely full. Is it fulfilling your needs to complete the mission that you need to do?
We have a fabulous facility and a fabulous parking spaces, but you are absolutely right. Our programming has outgrown maybe our parking spaces, but there is street parking that's available to the public too, but it's a very busy, busy corridor, you know, so. Yeah, I mean, we would always take more space and we would always take more parking. But, but yes, we do look at that, you know, going forward. Yeah, and during, when we are an election site, you know, we host meetings and trainings for many companies or organizations, and so we do use that parking space. That can be very, very full, for sure.
Kind of a follow-up on that. Thank you for your presentation. Couple of things. I've had constituents, when I was running for this position, that talked to me about the access. They hadn't used the library prior to kind of the Magnuson Park redoing. And I think, I don't know if your numbers have anything to do with the vitality of that whole corridor now. But one of the concerns that was raised is, there's a lot of people, especially this time of year, that are using both. And that crosswalk with all the street parking that is happening, do you see a need, or would you think it would be helpful to have like a flashing pedestrian light there? Because that was a concern that was raised to me, and I'm wondering what your take on that would be. I know that's an expense we would have to figure out how to budget if that was needed, but what's your take?
Yeah, I would love to see a flashing light there. I mean, I do think it is incredibly busy and it's a really wonderful shared kind of relationship. People go to the park, come to the library, back and forth. I can tell by all of the little particles from the park that are on the carpet. But, no, it's a wonderful partnership, great for families. Yeah, I mean, the safer we can make that crossing, the better.
Okay.
Yep.
Laura?
I, thank you, Gail. I just want to say the summer reading program is phenomenal. My two younger kids did the summer reading program for several years. It was a godsend, especially if you have kids who don't like to read. But I just want to say, it's great. It's a program that kids definitely should be in in the summertime. It keeps them active, keeps them reading, and they're ready for the next school year, so thank you for having that.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you, Gail, you and your staff for all that you do, and have a good summer reading.
Thank you.
With that, the final item, I think, is project updates. Lynn?
Good morning. Mayor asked just for a brief update on some things that have been going on over the last few months, so here it is real quick. 22 pictures, kind of a day in the life yesterday in the department. So the Aquatic Center opened up a little over a week ago. We've had some weather delays, but yesterday it was a full facility. We've got a projection of $31,000 in sales of family passes and admission packages. To date, we're at $22,000, so I think we're going to hit $31,000 and go beyond that. So just scroll through, there's a few of the pool here. It was a great day yesterday. Can't find it. Little arrow button hides sometimes.
Guy, are you finding with the amount of usage that you have adequate staff up there, or like we've staffed well enough or provided enough for staffing?
The number of staff we have is adequate. The schedule that we've set them on, we're having to tweak. We were having the staff come in 15 minutes prior to opening to staff of seven, just kind of hit the whole facility and get it ready for the day. And then on the backside, the staff in the evening was given an extra 15 minutes after closing to do some prep work, straighten up the deck and whatever, and we're having to extend that by a half hour, so. The arrow's not there. Can you just page down? Will that work? Well, there's 22 of them, so. Sorry about that.
As we move forward, Lynn, I've heard constituents wonder why we close the pool based on temperature. How was that set? What's the policy, please?
The policy is that we don't open until the temperature is 65 degrees or above. That was set just looking at what other cities' policies are. And we can tweak that. I've heard of, yesterday somebody commented that Fargo policy, I think, is 62 degrees.
That's true.
But it, just with the numbers of people that will come when it's that cold, it doesn't make sense to fully staff. And we, we can't partially staff with lifeguards, so we've got to have a full staff on there if we're going to open up.
I remember as a young man, with my youngest child, we didn't care what the temperature was. We were running in the rain and running in the pool, so. And I understand the economics of this. Full staffed, you're either on or off. And I don't know how many people would take advantage if the weathers were cooler. We were cheated out of some weather. We really had that hot session, beautiful opening. I would just ask if you would consider maybe dropping that a little bit, and I, I think the announcements have been fair, so that, that's, that's productive, so.
It's not set in stone, so yeah, if we want to go to 62 or 60.
You can visit with some of the kids that are there. I really don't think they care.
The water is heated, so.
Yes.
It's just, once they get out, it's going to be cold. But yeah, kid, you're right. Kids don't care.
Hopefully, we're on the other side of that now, though.
Let's hope. Promise?
No. I said hopefully.
So it looks like our pictures are advancing. Thanks, Lynn. So just a few of D Lagoon. This is the Legion Field. You can see the new lighting there that was installed and hearing great reviews of the quality of light for the evening play. Uh-oh, we're back to the. Oh, so this is the field adjacent to Legion Field. This is called Farmer's Field. That new lighting, as you can see, all the equipment there, Otter Electric is just installing that. Should be operational later this week. That's the D Lagoon complex. All that is brand-new lighting as of last year, and reviews on that again is, yeah, really well-accepted. The lighting is great. Yeah, that's just.
Monty.
Doing some irrigation line work. This is the campground. We're about 90-plus percent complete on the campground, and we're projecting we could maybe open late July, maybe early August. We just want to make sure the turf is established really well before we allow foot traffic and campers, other tent campers on the site, just so that we don't get that fresh grass trampled down, and then it's tougher to revive it. But fire rings and tables will be installed probably mid-July, and will be set for opening. That's the bathroom facility there. It was a pre-built structure, came in four pieces and set in place, and it's quite a structure, very sturdy. Just more pictures of the site. The paving into the campsite off of the boat-launch road was completed, well, it was started yesterday. It'll be completed today with the final wearing course. So the street department is busy fixing holes that the water department created over the winter, fixing water mains. So this is up on Lake Alice. They're just fixing one of those water main repairs. The month of June, the street department's really busy, first couple of weeks, with different events. Last week, it was the Lake Region Run. This week, it's Summer Fest, so between the street department and the park department, they're really busy just trying to cover the needs of those events, so. I took this picture just because that apparatus on the back of that truck is a new piece of equipment we purchased this year. It's a paver, basically. The asphalt dumps into that box out of the truck, and then they drive forward with the truck, and it lays the asphalt out. Pretty nice and smooth, and it just eliminates a lot of manual shovel work for the guys. So on Freiburg, you probably noticed, there is a little bit of work going on there yesterday and today. So there was another repair of the water main that had to be done there, so you see the jetter truck. They help out on a lot of excavations with hydroexcavation, and it makes uncovering pipe much safer. Once it's close with a excavator or a backhoe, then they can get down and do the fine excavation with the, with the jetter. Repair being done by a couple of the guys. And then this is another piece of the D-Lagoon project. This is the interior of the old concessions bathroom building, so it looks like a brand-new building in there. We got new surface on the walls. It's a cleanable surface rather than plywood. New partitions for the bathroom stalls, flooring, sinks, toilets, dispensers, everything is new. It looks, inside, it looks like it's brand-new, so that is work that was completed by basically Frank Stock and Derek Druliar from the park department, so we're able to do quality work like that in-house. And then pickleball. Fencing was installed a couple of weeks ago, and then the coating for the play surface was done soon after that. Nets were being installed. You can see the posts for the nets were installed, I think, yesterday. I think the final piece is a center anchor point for the net in pickleball. The net actually comes down at an angle in the middle, so we have, have to have an anchor in the middle to pull the net down. That'll be installed today, and hopefully, it'll be playable, usable by the weekend. Another one, this one I told was for Gail. She wants to put a bike rack like that at the library, so. Anyway, other projects that are coming up. Bill mentioned Junius. That's soon to happen, I think, in August. Ground storage, water reservoir demo, and landfill expansion, a lot of stuff going on.
Lynn, I appreciate all your time, and thank you. It, it kind of excites me as well. You know, the guys do a good job. We've always said that, the guys on the street. I've had questions in regards to concessions. Are the concessions open at D-Lagoon during these ballpark games?
They are. Yep.
I've heard they're not, so was it one day or two days? I, I, I don't know.
As of last Tuesday, they are open.
Okay.
Up to that point, we didn't have water or sewer to the building yet, as.
Sure, I understand.
Construction project out there, they just hadn't gotten to that piece. But now with water and sewer connected to that building, we, it is open.
And that's employee-staffed, city employees? It's not farmed out, and likewise at the pool?
Yep, both are staffed by city employees, seasonal city employees.
Thank you. One final question. I know you've got some covert set out on Water Plant Road. When is that scheduled?
Well, it was scheduled for next week, but now the roundabout project is going to be starting on Monday, so we're going to delay that work till after the roundabout is complete, so.
That'll be in '27?
Fall of '25. Hold me to it.
'27 it is.
On, on D-Lagoon, opening late July, early August, is the public, I've been asked, when can people start booking, or when are we going to put out to the public so booking can happen? And mind you, I was asked probably three weeks ago, so maybe that has changed in that timeframe.
We're working on a registration software. It's called Camp Spot, so that'll probably, three or four weeks, it'll be available.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We'll get the word out, though, when that goes live.
Okay. So we, we can safely tell people we're thinking at least by mid-August it should be usable? Or we, or is that not a safe thing to say at this point?
It's not really safe.
Okay, not at all.
I wouldn't put that out there. We're hopeful, but we need good grass-growing weather.
Right. Okay.
Need some rain.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I would request that Lynn comes on a more frequent basis and updates us on what's really going on in the city. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you, Lynn. With that, the announcements are 5:30 council meeting. June 19th of next week, most city offices, buildings will be closed in observance on Juneteenth. Liquor store will be open. Garbage and recycling that's normally picked up on that Thursday would be collected on the Wednesday. Friday's collection will be normal on Friday. And then June 30th at 5:00 PM, the town hall meeting. Quorum of council may attend, and will be held that day. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.